Okay, we're coming to recognition and presentation. We'll go to citizens communication first. We're waiting on a gentleman to get here. We do have one person that has signed up to speak, Ms. Shelton. Speak back there.
Good evening. I think that y'all know, or maybe y'all don't know, but I was trying to be involved on the bond in educating people and speaking to the teachers and, you know, trying to encourage them to vote. Or maybe they might've said I was bullying them a little bit, but I was very persistent on, you know, I call it persistence, on getting the, you know, signs put out and educating teachers. And recently, several teachers have come to me and just asked, like, "What's going on? You know, what do we know? Do I know anything on the pay raise?" And so I think teachers are just really wanting to know something. You know, "What's the process? Or are y'all further along than before?" And I know that, you know, they've made comments that now is the time that they need to be looking. And I know the grass is not greener on the other side. I know that, and we've talked about that. However, I do know that teachers would like something before they make decisions on, you know, whether to stay, whether to go. I know that some teachers who have gone elsewhere have set, you know, they're staying and they love it. And I'm not talking about the schools with four-day weeks. I'm talking about regular five-day-week schools. So they're enjoying it, and they are making more money. So, and I have been teaching 30 years, so I know I need to be strategically planning my retirement. I'm not ready yet. I love my job. But I think teachers just would like some type of information or some questions or some answers on what's the next process that y'all are, where y'all, where are y'all at? So that way, teachers can make decisions. Thank you.
Sorry, we have a gentleman that we're waiting for to receive the Divine Scholars' presentation and the money that we had for him. Okay, let's go on to our administrative reports. We'll get Dr. Branch's report first.
Okay, as you know, we talk about this on the regular, the A3F accountability system and the A3F refresh. We're still waiting on a lawsuit that's going on within the state right now. So none of our ratings have been released. Our test scores have come back, and this video has been this presentation on the other side of things that are happening there. High schools doing their internal assessment, which is basically like a vehicle that looks the same as Star. And some of the reports that are coming back from that, Mr. Gonzalez told us Wednesday, are pretty phenomenal. So we're extremely excited about. We may end up getting to see the 23-24 ratings at the same time as seeing the 22-23 ratings. So we'll have to see, wait, see how that turns out. This is another important thing that I repeat month after month, but January 18th was the date that we approved the sale of the $11.255 million in bond proceeds. And that is kept in the Texas School and Bus Fund that Jen has organized our account. So everything's safe and secure. It's one of the only vehicles of investment that TBA allows. So I'm amazed at that, we say. Our initial plan for the teacher incentive allotment was submitted to Region 15 yesterday, or Friday, and we're waiting back for comments and collaboration. We did some calculating. This year is what they would call our application year. The data validation year is '24-'25. And '25-'26 is, uh, well, next year's data collection. '25-'26 is data validation. So you can find out in February of '26, who the teachers were that qualified for this. When we were thinking that it wouldn't be until the fall of '26 that the money is actually delivered to the teachers at the high school on this regional plan, but it could be May of '26. And if a teacher is determined to be a master teacher, that would be another $18,000 on top of their salary. After we submit and get this plan approved, starting in September of next year, then we will add the intermediate elementary and middle school all at the same time. At least never do one campus at a time. If you try to put all of that together at once, it's a huge undertaking, just trying to get all the meetings together. People press across the front campuses, but... And high school is the one that is probably going to have more of the student learning objectives and things have to be fixated in the plan. Everybody else, you just amend it to add on the campuses. So we're excited about that. All of our breakings are still posted on the website. We'll get you ready for next year. I know that two of our teachers at the intermediate, based on the early retirement organization incentive, Mr. Gomez was actually able to, we've got those teachers already hired for next year. So that is off. Then we have four determined individuals here.
I think we found four. Four found.
And the last date is Friday. It's coming Friday. Because I put the wrong date. It should've been last Friday. That's okay. Right? We still have some work done. Yes. Safety visits. We got a phone call that they're still active. We have two campuses, I think, that may be due for an intruder detection audit before the end of the year. So that could be at any time. We're ready. We're set. All of the important things is we're confident in meeting all the expectations of those. Thursday, the 28th, will be student of the month. So if anybody wants to come out, it's this Thursday. Yes, ma'am. We are starting the cycle two safe grant. Became active, or will be active on March 28th. I pretty much got the application set because we're the weird one that we used the last time. That's the grant that we got from TBA. That's right at $1.1 million. This next set of monies that's coming through is going to give us a little bit more freedom on what we can spend. I went to the safety meeting that Sheriff Brown had for Medina County. The governor and the new mandates now that the sheriff of each county is the overarching school safety guardian or looker, outer, or whatever.
He's in charge.
So all of the schools in Medina County and law enforcement agencies were at that meeting. This was held at Medina Valley ISD. The next meeting, we get to host, and they actually resped it out to where Sheriff Brown said the in-stake holders that we have that would be interested. So if anybody here wants to come, tell them to. I don't know. They're supposed to, um, they're going to get scheduled. We're really just supposed to get someone running the meeting. So he will get to me outside and ask if we can. And as you know, we picked a checkup to leave before our contractor, Bob Shelton, was the architect. We're going to have, we're getting the contracts together. We use a standard AIA contract architect association. Something to that nature. While she's putting that together for us and updating it, we actually got it. She said to me that Friday. And so we're working to get that sent over to contractor and the engineer, I mean, the architect. See if they agree with everything. Shouldn't be fine. Because it's the same way that everybody uses. However, they agreed to, they're already working with us, and they're able to come to us on April the 3rd. They're going to start the learning walks and talks to look at the projects and things that they're going to develop. And the first principle of order is to look at the stairs. So that won't probably be as much fun for anybody to come and look at that, but I'll be able to tell you how to take that walk.
They already mentioned whenever in the interview that they had part with them. And they had done walk around at school and everything. We had plenty already. But we thought we could figure that out. It's going to be more difficult to say.
But it probably was a little bit, I keep saying this, this is probably a little bit of a blessing that that got held up because if we're going to not turn, that's going to be our entryway for the high school, then be able to do something a little bit more. As kind of for me, or I believe in that. Where that, where the bus circle is, that's where we put our administration offices. Safety-wise, we kind of talked about that already. Mr. Gomez went with me to the sheriff's meeting. I know Sam, the date is tentative, but we will, uh, we're trying to get that out. So it'll be in town if anybody wants to come. And now that the weather is nice, we're going to do a coordinated lockdown drill. I will have that date for you. We don't say it out loud. But I know Chris said if you want to come. So we kind of got to surprise the teachers. One of the things that they were talking about at the sheriff's meeting was the fact that everybody, they were wanting everybody to go to kind of a key to century that a key card type situation. And all of the school districts use the same system. So with one of the companies that we've partnered with, ACS, they're wanting to go that route because they would be able to give all of their officers a key card. And they would go to every single school instead of now. I think Honda ended up getting a system. And one of the things that you have to worry about is, they said that the accounting's system is like 24-bit, and the one they bought was 64-bit. And so then you have to have two different computers to like measure them together. And it was, I'm glad we had the meeting because there was a whole lot of information that we were able to get taken care of. Two of the county judges, Judge Luce, he was there. And there was another gentleman that I can't recall. So it's good everybody's coming together. We'll be kind of in the same, in the same system. So they said that two big problems if you have an emergency is communicating to law enforcement agencies and then being able to get it. So that's all I have on this question.
And we move on to Ms. Vito's report. Any questions on that? Yes. Okay, no questions on Ms. Vito without Ms. Myers' report on Student Services. Okay? And Director of Special Education, Ms. Stagman's report. And thank you for the RDA report. We don't understand it all, but it's really good. No other questions? And business reports, Ms. Shannon?
I just have one question. Is there any updates from the county if they're going to let us collect those back taxes? Or other?
For our funding?
Or the few that still apply that? This is, has the county made that decision?
We did collect. There was an update in my board report. We did collect 2022 from one of our top 10. That was a big chunk. So that was exciting.
Thank you. Okay, any questions on any of the financial reports from basketball, school, and the school? So there are some. No questions? And our director's report? And on the consent agenda? That includes the minutes of two board meetings, approval for the donation for robotics, and to approve our construction materials allotment and the TCA certification for '24-'25. Questions on that? Oh, and a request for the athletic boosters. As you saw, they wanted an additional $2150. And our motion on consent agenda?
I'm going to move to approve the Senate agenda.
Okay. I have a motion by Henry and a second by Chris to approve the consent agenda. I'll give the motion again, please. Passes by. Oh, thank you. Now we move on to our action items. Consider take possible action to accept the certification of unopposed candidates and adopt an order declaring the trustee election canceled and unopened candidates elected. Unopposed candidates elected. Sorry. Something like this sounds essence. And motion?
I'm going to move to accept the certification of unopposed candidates and adopt order declaring the trustees election canceled. Unopposed candidates elected.
Okay. Motion by Chris and a second by Henry. Want to finish your motion again? Passes by. Oh, thank you. Glad to have y'all officially back on board. Okay, consider take possible action to revise the FNCA local student conduct dress code.
So we've been having this discussion for two or three years. Whenever it comes time to visit the dress code. And it seemed like I always got a late start to where it wasn't helpful because we started making serious conversations in May, and it was already, you know, time to get a policy direction here. So it wasn't helpful for parents to have to change this. So starting at the very beginning of fall of this year, we invited everybody that wanted to participate, be part of the dress code committee. We didn't really take it to DEIC, but we did a similar format. Conversations, surveys out to the public, more meetings. Our last meeting that we had was this past Monday. There was probably some confusion, maybe, on getting here. It was Monday after spring break. I don't know. But we did have a great turnout. So instead of just having that small group, we sat and talked and told them that we appreciated them coming. And we ended up sending out an email-type question to everybody that had volunteered who at some point had participated in the dress code committee. Said, hey, here's some options. We said, leave the standardized dress code the way it is currently. Move to a, what we call a common sense dress code, which would be something that you can see somewhere to other schools that, you know, will have lovely riding on their shirts and make sure that all the appropriate parts are covered, that type of stuff. Or we had the option.
No, just two.
We would have to. Because we were talking about adoption. Don't go back, go stricter than we already were. We're like, we probably wouldn't give a good response on that. So as it came in, it was a little surprising. I would say probably 65%. But it wasn't really 50/50, and it wasn't overwhelming. But the majority of the group said, we would like to make a recommendation, come to the board to move to a common sense dress code. So what was put before you guys is if we revised FNCA local and based on the survey results, the recommendation that we got from the group that you could directly shoot a tenant to come up with a common sense dress code or find a local that would have to run under school and bring that to you to look at.
Did you just say this earlier?
So we'll get a chance to look at it and make sure our common sense is the same as your common sense? What's the question? What's common sense?
It's common sense.
The last question is if they can join the like, their shipping speed or not is what's important.
Yeah, but I think that is...
He wants to tackle.
He wants to kind of guide us.
It's not a standard.
Right, exactly. That's what Jerry and I, Jerry and I, the wording is, you know. We determined, obviously, this is just our guess, is that they said you always have to have some sort of dress code. Otherwise, there's going to be a breach.
I think I would like to request that our policy committee be sure and look at that before we bring it to vote. So those who need it on policy committee, they can do this tonight. You know, I'm sure that we'll find a standing woman out there that, you know, a lot of different schools use. They still need to know that.
So what's a common sense right now different from what we got now? How would that be changed?
You could wear any color black t-shirt that you wanted or any color polo. You could wear a blue polo or green polo or none of those black colors. You could probably have writing on it that if it said, I don't know, like a Maggiore shirt. It has a picture of fish or something. As long as it was a Fendi or...
Promote drugs or alcohol.
Oh, yeah. Right, right, right.
Do you know the districts that we said are in common sense?
The leaders gave us the floor. I think we shared that.
And that's really not like a, that's not an educational term. We just started saying that, you know, it just helps us.
Because the other districts say...
Helps us revert back to that.
And any other questions? Commissioner, any questions?
Would approve revision to FNCA local student conduct dress code and to Director Superintendent to develop a common sense dress code. For the student.
No, this is the second one. On break, pressure back here. Thank you. Consider take possible action to approve the purchase agreement for Tazpi Energy Co-op 2. Remember, purchase this fixed road transportation fuel work. Ms. Shannon?
And this is just the time of year where we commit to Tazpi a certain number of gallons of fuel for the following school year. After everybody commits, they go out for pricing. And then I'll come back and set the price.
Do we know how many gallons? I mean, I'm sure you do. Does anybody know?
It's like $18,000.
I want to see that sound stuff.
I have it.
Diesel's about $18,000.
That sounds about...
Gasoline, I think, was not...
I think it was like, I don't know, they're like $7,500 on the gas.
Yes.
$15 to $20 on the diesel.
We do two or three every other month. Two, three thousand.
So we got help with the regulation here? Just once they get how many gallons we're asking for with everybody else, they go out there. Because the rate you have there is $2.51, you know, for regular on the, and this would be from June '24 to August '25?
Yes. No?
Be from September 1 till August 31st and '25.
We were trying to adjust to that.
And what year? They couldn't even use a pass on that, couldn't they? They couldn't?
Yes. Because it was so bad. It was reasonable for any of small districts to do it. It was better to swallow.
And further move to approve the purchase agreement for Tazpi Energy Co-op 2 and then the purchase of fixed rate and the testing pool cover as presented.
Okay, I have a motion by Henry, the second one. Care to approve the purchase agreement in Tazpi on February 29th? Thank you. That's wonderful. Thank you, Shannon. Okay, that finishes our business for tonight except what we have in closed session. So we will, we will end the session. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Let's see if Mr. Bender is on the way. Can I wait just a few minutes longer? Tell me if you found this long. I know he was out on the track today.
So Divine, Divine Scholars' Scholar was founded in 2009 by Divine High School graduate Harold Conrad. Mr. Conrad graduated in 1954 from Divine High School along with other original board members, Bob Bendley, John Ward, Susan Broccoli, and Bill Bain established the foundation for the sole purpose of giving scholarship money to Divine High School graduates to help them pursue a post-secondary education. Over $30,000 in scholarships have been given each year to Divine High School seniors since 2013. The foundation continues to grow. And every year, Divine ISD contributes to that foundation during education, located emphasis in January. The board members currently of Divine Scholars' Scholars for Scholars, Mr. Bob Bendley, president, Bill Bain, vice president, Michelle Spievy, secretary treasurer, G. N. Schofield, Brenda Gardner, Richard Ramirez, and Harold Conrad is the financial advisor. So for 2024, the donation of Divine ISD to Scholars for Scholars is $1,885.62.
Raise it up under your chin. Up higher.
Oh.
Oh. That way.
You do that to him, huh?
Okay, good deal.
Chairman of the Board, Madam Thor.
Yes, you have.
First apologies. Wood told me 6:30. I wrote down 6:30, and Brandon said 7:30. I may call it senility. Get Bobby right. He gave the history of, it's been 12 years ago, whatever. We gave $500. This year, we're going to give $43,000 to PHX graduate seniors. Five of those scholarships, I don't know exactly how many, but five, totally going to give, but five of them are continuing scholarships. They will get $1,500 a year for four years. And we tell them, all you got to do is make whatever they're going to have, C average and be good citizens. And then you'll get your scholarship for the four years. Now, we have at least two M.D.s that are graduates from Divine and with Scholars for Scholars help have made it that far and many others. And so it's been a rewarding thing for us, and we're going to continue to do it. We're getting some young people in and hoping they will take over for us. But as I say, every year, any of the money donated, and all of this money was donated, but the money is never spent. Someone makes a donation, be it small, it's invested, and the only money spent is what it makes it's invested in. And all that money, not one dollar of that money has come from a fundraiser. We felt, again, like most small towns, Vinesno different, that have plenty of fundraisers already. So they've all been donations. And one of the ways that people who lives in lieu of flowers, when somebody passes, they donate to Scholars for Scholars and we send a note recognizing that donation. So that donation is truly a lifetime, a forever donation. So thank you. And thank the students and sponsors. I know the pain for letting me do this, but it will be put to good use, we promise. That says, I think, I think it says what Divine, me and Divine thinks of Divine ISD. I know it is. And that's not new, and we're going to keep it. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bender. Okay, I do think we're ready now to go into closed session. The board trustees, beginning at 7:05, will convene in closed session and of course, with Texas Southern meetings app. For the purposes of discussion, I was listed under Texas Southern Code, Section 500, Order 74, and 500, Order 2. Your highest decision to close will be taking a lot of orders in executive session. Thank you all for coming.